Towers.
Thank you. I'm going to give it another couple of minutes. My understanding is Alan should be here tonight. Maybe he's stuck in Hill Street traffic.
Oh, thank you.
He's still.
This, this, this is new. Pre-submission. I didn't see if there's nothing on the white side on that.
It's just right here. It's a donut shop.
Oh, yeah.
Just right here. It just says, you know, on this packet we just got, we have our scheduling of a pre-submission conference.
I have some, oh, here it is. Okay. All right, that was a very... Donut shop.
Yeah.
Sick. So not being paid.
We haven't had a chance to review this.
This is right around the corner from me. This is, this is here. It's on the other side.
This is today.
This is today.
Yeah, I haven't seen this memo before.
Ready back there? Good evening, everyone. Let's get started. This is the October 6th Planning Board meeting of 2025. Welcome. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes running, a couple of minutes late. Definitely wanted Alan here. Let's start with Village of Southampton Diamond Communications.
So the board will remember this period was closed.
At the last meeting?
Yes.
The board had previously issued a secret determination because this was a coordinated action between this board and other land use boards.
Right.
The application has been approved for a special exception use by the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's been reviewed by the Architecture Review Board. And it's back here with the, a draft determination that you have in front of you for its site plan review.
Yeah.
Which I believe should be the final step for this application to move forward.
That draft just appeared today, right?
Yes.
Has anyone had a chance, everyone had a chance to read this?
No.
We could also go through, go through it with Allison, maybe at least I could summarize here.
Yeah, if everyone on the board is okay, let's do that so that we can move this along and not take it to the next meeting. If everybody good with that?
Yes.
If you're not, raise your hand.
Would you like the, a summary of what the decision says? Or would you like me to read the decision?
I think a summary is fine unless there are any objections. Summary is fine.
All right. So just as a reminder, this is Diamond Towers LLC is the applicant who's a contract B.C. for the Village of Southampton. The site is village-owned property at 25 Windmill Lane. So the first few points in the resolution, just note the location of the property and the applicant and the village as owner. The applicant applied to the board on April 11th, 2025, seeking site plan approval for the installation of the 125-foot monopole with a nine-foot lightning rod and then all the associated equipment, retaining wall and fencing for the premises. The, the purpose of the project is to provide the necessary telecommunications services for emergency communication as well as public telecommunications with leased space to presumably mobile providers. On May 5th, 2025, the planning board classified this as an unlisted action under SECRE and circulated the, the short environmental assessment form and the coordinated review to all other agencies. Notably, this project did require CVA approval, so they were part of the coordination. The board then completed the, reviewed the short environmental assessment form, parts one, completed part two and three, identified no potential significant environmental impacts, and on July 21st, 2025, adopted a negative declaration under SECRE. The project was subject to a special exception permit from the zoning board of appeals, which was granted on August 7th. And also a couple of variance release were required as well. They were also approved on August 7th. So then the, the application was presented to the planning board originally on May 5th with the public hearing held on September 15th. And notably, evidence was presented at the public hearing, including evidence related to the coverage and alternatives analysis that the board wanted to see. So that, that all occurred at the last public hearing on this file. And the site plan was reviewed for compliance with site plan standards and found to be in compliance. So with that said, the, you know, the standard condition that the site plans would be approved, you know, subject to any, if any change was, substantial change was made to the site plan, it would be required to return to the board for approval of a modified site plan. So it's approved as, as presented in that last iteration of the site plan. And that, that is really the summation of what that, that decision entails. But if there's any discussion points or questions or concerns that you still have, certainly still welcome to discuss them.
Alice, anything to add?
Not at all.
Any board members have any questions, comments?
No.
Good here?
No.
So can we, sorry, any questions or comments?
No, I just want to thank staff. I thought it was a great job on the resolution, so thank you.
Alice, can we move this along? And specifically, how do we do that if this is just a draft that was added to the file?
It's ready to go, so you can just vote on to adopt the resolution, and I can record the vote.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as we have in front of us.
Okay.
Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much for your time throughout the process. Thank you.
Start building. Next on the agenda is RRFACF LLC, 560 Wickapock Road. We heard a lot of comments, discussions at our last meeting. And the board really didn't have a chance to process that at the meeting nor discuss it. So what I'd like to do now is have the board discuss the SECRE issues here so that we have an opportunity to discuss that and process it. We're very interested in everyone's comments on that, but I'd like those comments to happen after the board discussion. And to the extent that there are any comments, we're going to be mercenary in limiting those comments to three minutes because it's just, you know, long testimony, if that's what you want to call it, or long comments, just make it very difficult for everyone on the board to sort of absorb the situation and process it. So I'm going to open it up to discussion and comments among board members. Anyone like to start with that?
Sure, I'll start. I think, you know, in the original SECRE analysis, H2M had indicated in their conclusion that the two main impacts of the project are on agricultural resources and human health. I particularly noted the agricultural resources and the fact that we're going to be losing a considerable amount of agricultural land. There are, you know, there's an, I think, an offer of 25% of the site for agricultural reserve, but there are a number of buildings on it. And in addition, there's a, an easement that seems to be included in that 25% that came up in the last meeting. And I believe that Counselor Bennett had indicated that some of the open space could be made up out of lots one and two for that particular portion. I don't know how many square feet there are, et cetera, but that's a concern of mine. We are losing our farmland, and I think that's part of the nature of the East End and of Southampton. So that's one of my thoughts. And then human health, I mean, we have a pond. That last meeting, we were pretty much, pretty well advised, is polluted. And, you know, there's, the contribution to that pollution has come from very many, many sources. But, you know, I, I believe that the pond, the easement to the pond is very important so that it can be tested and any remediation can occur. In addition, the underlying soils of the farm may have certain pollutants in them or hazardous material. And I think we have to be aware of that and how that can be ameliorated, if at all. Those are my main concerns.
I would like to add that I think with respect to the ag reserve language and also the 25% allocation, Mr. Bennett did agree that the easement that is compromising a portion of what we consider to be that reserve could be moved toward Fowler Street to be on the, I believe it was lot one. So anyway, the language, the locations, all of this needs to be worked out. There's a significant amount of work to do. And I actually like the idea of moving some of the ag easement to Fowler Street. In particular, I would like to have it across the street from what is already deer fencing and showing a very lovely agricultural vista. We could use that. It might be a really actually fortunate thing for us that that easement is there because we can take that land and we can create an attractive corridor with open view sheds that can be enjoyed by everyone and especially people going down the beach. There's a lot of concerns about the contents of the ag easement, which houses are in, you know, in violation, lots of things to consider there. So I think we need further consideration. And because it is one of the main aspects of SECRE, I think that we are not prepared to vote in favor of a nega, a negative declaration at this time. But I've spent my efforts really focusing on two other aspects, and I'd like to read into the record because I anticipated interruption, but I think that's not going to happen. Still, I, I'm going to read it. And wrote it, what I wrote was, "I want to begin by saying that despite the Suffolk County Planning Commission's recommendation of Phase One environmental site assessment and potentially a Phase Two ESA afterwards, I don't believe this applicant should be required to do what no others have had to do in similar subdivision applications. The Fowler's are not the only people to have farmed near Phillips Pond. They are likely the last, and Phillips Pond will be landlocked after this subdivision is complete, however. Furthermore, this is a time of heightened environmental scrutiny, especially of ponds in our village. Aerial views are the only data that this board has seen. As far as we know, there has never been any baseline testing of the nitrogen and phosphorus levels of Phillips Pond. While this is not required of the applicant, the access easement that they have agreed to provide for pond maintenance and testing will be critical for this purpose going forward. The drafting of such easement must be done with care and consideration, allowing for modification should future remediation be found necessary. Environmentalists and citizens of this village are all dealing with the results of poor environmental planning when it comes to ponds, including Agawam and Old Town. To me, this elevates the need for this board to require, as the first condition to SECRE approval, that the design and language of the maintenance access easement for Phillips Pond be approved by the planning board before final subdivision approval. The language must be crafted carefully because without baseline data, we don't know the scope of what may be required in the future to protect the pond. The task will be to draft an access easement anticipating future needs, including perhaps remediation of any public health risk and to protect surface water. Of course, even with the access easement provided by the applicant, permission to test the pond water itself lies with the owner of the pond bed, in this case, the trustees of the freeholders of the town of Southampton. The second condition, I submit, should require that prior to final approval, an erosion and sedimentation control plan for the development of the site be provided to ensure that the soils will be contained on site. Although we are not requiring a Phase One or Phase Two, we must ensure that the original farmed soil, which may contain contaminants due to farming which could be harmful to human health, that they be contained appropriately to ensure safety. This concern, for me, rises to the level of requiring extra scrutiny during the SECRE process. While it could be dealt with in the regular course of subdivision approval process, I don't feel comfortable without the extra layer of analysis and protection the conditional negative declaration process provides. Thank you."
Great, thanks. But down here, this side, any comments, questions, discussion?
I would say my biggest concern is to make sure the easement provides adequate room for remediation equipment if it's necessary, if determined to, for the pond. And I guess right now we just see a 15-foot wide strip, and I don't know, have no idea if that's sufficiently large to accommodate what would be needed to remediate the pond. I'm not sure that has to do with SECRE, but that was something I would think we need to keep, keep an eye on.
Mr. McFarlane?
I'm sorry, the other items kept me out of the village until about five minutes ago out of Long Island. This is a matter of long history and great complexity, partly because of the long history, which is, just comes before us. It's not a creation of our long deliberation over the history. And this is, as someone just, I guess Amanda just said, this is pretty unique. It's sort of the last gasp before the turnpike. If you don't get enough gas, you don't get off the expressway. And so a lot of people have weighed in. And there are a lot of things that have happened in the guise of everyone who knows the future. It's common knowledge in political dialogue that the earth is irrevocably warming and Southampton will be underwater, for instance. There's a whole lot of stuff we can contend with. People have asserted publicly in this, that all these buildings will have to be 15 feet above water if they're ever developed. That's not our jurisdiction, I don't believe. We just have to either grant or not grant the subdivision of this land by the longtime owner, current owner, descendants of prior owners. I, I think every issue is important, but I don't think that this residual fraction of family holding, it's still the same family, this residual fraction of the family holding requires this essentially brand-new series of impediments. I think access to the lake is quite important as an ongoing civic matter. There are many bodies of water left over from the end of the glacier that formed this land. That access is important. I, I think with my colleague at 15 feet, I'm not smart enough to know how they're going to do it. I think better access is in the bottom of it because, believe it or not, water still flows downhill. We can't change that. The bottom down toward the beach is the proper access, but I'd hope that that has been arranged, but it's, I gather it's still not occurring in a tiny bit of land in between village-owned property and the bottom of this pond. The pond was, is an accident of all of the water along the Barrier Beach as a result of over 200 years of agricultural use, which has been swamped by a land bubble of people living there in former farm fields. And so we're, we can't reverse that. We can't take away all the houses. So we're dealing with the present predicament of houses that attract a lot of market money and create a major federal and local tax problem for the owners. It's a major issue that everyone faces who has anything left in Long Island and Southampton and in the Village of Southampton. It's, it's a mess no one wants to have, and we're referees of those who have it and those who maybe want to have it but don't have it. But I, I think every issue has been thoroughly vetted except for the process of getting FNC trustee access to their pond, which they accidentally own as a matter of property law that preceded everyone in this room and all their forbears. So that's, that's not, I wish there was one of the trustees who are up for election right now, I believe, or reelection. I wish one of the trustees had attended all these things. It's their pond. I guess they're busy and they have no budget. They don't ever appear much, but I wish they would. So it's, it's their problem. So I'm prepared to delegate it to them. I don't think it's our board legally. It's our problem to deal with the trustees' issues. But we're doing our best for the village assisting the FNC trustees. So I would rest my case. We ought to proceed.
Okay, good, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
I did speak with counsel regarding some of my concerns, and some of the issues that I felt were important, Alice indicated that some of that could be determined later on in the process. However, I, I do think that the access to the pond is really critical, and I, I would, I would move to have a conditional negative declaration that provides that access, the easement has very specific language in it and is size determination, et cetera, composition that would require approval of the board. And, and until that language, et cetera, is fully flushed out, I don't think that we could approve, we could finally approve the subdivision. And I, I would, I would move to have something in the negative declaration conditioned upon having language in there regarding the easement.
That document, that, that would be a motion for a conditional negative declaration, which is what I'm advocating for because it's, it's not the Phase One, it's not the Phase Two. It just simply will give us a bit more time to consider these very important environmental and containment issues, which I don't think will take a lot of time, but we need to have them, we need to have them hammered out now. And if we keep saying subject to, subject to, we will not get, we will not be focused on them because we have such, so many issues to focus on as well. So I am for the, I vote for the conditional negative declaration. I think it's prudent. I think it's the right course of action, and it is much more streamlined than, than anything else we could require.
I understand there's a person on the table. I'd like, Alice, your legal advice about the necessity to, because I heard two different things, or I thought I heard two different things, and that was a question I was going to ask. I thought I heard you say that a maintenance easement, the easement conflict, some of the outstanding items, you would be fine if those were settled, confirmed, settled at the preliminary site plan approval, which is the next step in this process after SECRE. Now I'm hearing you say that you want at least a maintenance easement settled at, as part of the SECRE determination. Did I hear that correctly?
I have two conditions for the, that would be the conditional negative declarations. Specifically, would be the, the language of the easement.
The maintenance.
The maintenance access easement that has been given. That is number one. And number two would be the language about containment of old-soiled farm soiled on site and that sedimentary plan in the, because it's also going to have a lot of fill new land in order to raise the property above the water table. So those two rise to a lever, a level that I feel requires a special amount of scrutiny and time and just to get that done right. I am not advocating at this point that the ag reserve language map be part of that. That, that would continue in its separate channel, but for purposes of the SECRE process, those two negative conditions can be dealt with after a 30-day period.
Alice, can you enlighten us on the process and whether it is your experience or your view of the appropriateness of conditioning a SECRE determination at this stage on the two items that Amanda mentioned versus as part of the preliminary site plan approval?
So this, everything that I've seen, all of H2M's memos and everything the board has discussed, has indicated that the board does not believe that this proposal, the proposed subdivision, will have negative impacts on the surface water. That's everything we've seen. And that's what the board should be considering, whether the proposal, not whether or not Phillips Pond is presently polluted and whether or not it's a great thing to have this access and to have testing and possible remediation, but whether this proposal will have negative environmental impacts on the surface water. So I don't see how having a condition on a neg deck would address that, but maybe, I don't know what.
If I may.
I'm sorry.
I just think you misunderstood. This is not about testing.
This is not about requiring testing from the applicant. It is nothing more, is required nothing more than the access easement that they are already giving us and is much appreciated by everyone because this will be a landlocked subdivision. It has solely to do with the language that we draft pertaining to that grant of an easement and making sure it is sufficient to accommodate the future, which none of us know, and we don't know the condition, nor are we testing. It's not required of them or of us to know. But we are charged with, in the planning board, to look ahead and to look ahead wisely and to plan wisely. And that lang, that language is all we have, and we need to make sure it's right. So I don't feel that we've given it the look we, we need. I think we need to look a lot deeper, and that has nothing to do with testing, simply that the language of the easement has to be, it has to work for future generations. And I don't want to see another situation like we have here where, where the language didn't allow for maybe the type of machine that might be needed as Bill Diment mentioned, or it may not accommodate what's needed. That doesn't mean they'd have to do more. It means we need to understand more and build it into the language, not put more, more requirements on the applicant. That's not what I'm doing here.
Sure. I mean, discussions of what belongs in that easement certainly should be fleshed out with the applicant. And in my experience, usually it is the municipality that prepares the easements that they require of the applicant, and those easements and, you know, drafts get attached to any preliminary approval, and they're requirements, they're, they're conditions of approval. But I guess I'm just, I'm not... But I guess I'm just, I'm not seeing the connection to SEACRA.
So if I can just chime in to just synthesize the different points I'm hearing, because I, I think we're all heading to the, everything has been heading to the same place. And i- in principle, even the issues you're raising and the mitigations you're raising, they've in theory been agreed to, to some degree, right? We know where there's, the intent is just, there is an easement shown, but we haven't, the board has not hammered out the details of exactly the language of the easement or the, they haven't agreed to the exact conditions of that easement. Similarly, the twenty-five percent agricultural reserve conservation area has been proposed, but we know that there, and they've agreed to the fact that that area that's already encumbered by an existing easement will be removed and they'll find twenty-five percent somewhere else. We don't know exactly where that difference is yet. So there's still things that need to be sorted out. Similarly, we know that a SWIP will be required, soil and erosion and sedimentation control will, you know, in principle. And what you're looking for right now is just this, that the, in order to reach this negative declaration from a SEACRA standpoint, that these, the presumption of these things, which we don't quite have yet ironed out, is the thing that's, that's, that's the issue that's hanging us up. So there's, there, in, in some ways, the decision is, is conditioned already, even though it's not written out as conditions, on the fact that it's assumed that we're going to get to agreement on these issues because that's how we're getting to the conclusion that this eas, this subdivision can actually be more protective of the pond because of the easement and the removal and the increase in the wetland setback. So really from like a legal standpoint, I would say with Alice's is the, what they are trying to, because we don't have all the details of the subdivision hammered out to satisfaction of the board yet, which is always a little difficult with the sequencing of everything, that these can be, those things which have preliminary been agreed to anyway could be, could as conditions of SEACRA or they could be conditions of site plan potentially, not site plan, subdivision, of the subdivision process. But the, the idea that we're getting to, that, that, that it sounds like what you're saying is that they're very critical to your understanding of what is protective, that, that you would like as a, it's not even something that you need to research more. It's just something that is a condition that once that's established, the SEACRA neg deck stands for you. Is that, is that?
Yes. Once the language is agreed to and everyone's comfortable, I see no problem proceeding. But until then, I don't feel that we have, we have protected, you know, ourselves adequately.
Against what?
In making this decision, that we've given it the hard look, that we've done what we need to do. I feel like there's certain elements and two, there's a third of the ag reserve, but I'm just, that's how I feel about it.
So I appreciate your comments. I, I really do, but help me understand the connection, because this is the part that I'm disconnecting on, the connection between the specific language of a maintenance easement. Let's take it step by step, the specific language of a maintenance easement, which we all agree, at least we're saying we all agree, is critical to the approval of the subdevelopment. What that language, the impact that that language has on the SEACRA review, which is defined as the impact to human health, that's the part that I'm not hearing, understanding your argument.
Well, I would submit that reviewing language, understanding it and choosing what is appropriate would then be a time for you to say, you know, I'm not sure what language. This is in my purview to say I don't have adequate language to be comfortable in issuing a negative declaration at this time. So I'm not going to debate with you on hypothetical language, but this easement, this easement is limited to access of something that we have no, we do not have a lot of data, we don't have any really, on what could be ahead. And that's no fault of the applicant and it's not their responsibility, but it is ours, I think, of the stores of this village to look ahead and say, can we plan better? What can we, what can we put in that? And we haven't even had a discussion as a board. So Hannah, would you like, I don't know if you wanted to, but.
So I understand where you're trying to get to, and I think we all agree, but I don't understand why the preliminary site plan or the final site plan would diminish that determination as opposed to making a determination now.
These are not things that can be determined.
Because don't you have another two bite at the apple?
But this is the SEACRA portion. This is the SEACRA process. It can run contingent along with any site, subdivision site approval process. We are trying to condense it, in my mind, quickly. It does not have to be done this quickly and there are just a few points that we would like to work on before, that I would like to work on. So I don't, just because something can be done in the normal process, this is not a phase one or phase two. It is not particularly onerous or lengthy. It is one hurdle. It is a flashing yellow instead of green at this time, and I'm absolutely certain we will get to green. And we want the application to move quickly and it's, it's, it is not personal. We are trying very hard to just do the right thing, balancing environmental concerns, environmental realities, and if we leave everything to the site plan review, who's to say it will go any faster than if we do it right and put the brakes on now when SEACRA and, you know, the Suffolk County Planning Commission and others have already opined that we're going too quickly. That's not my, I'm not the judge of this, but I'm just saying we're under pressure to do this right, not just for the bowlers, but to, for the community, for the village. And I'm on that side. I just want these two issues that I feel, the soils and the access, these are, they are small perhaps to some, but they're, they're really large in their potential danger.
So that, so I'm clear, the two issue, your two issues are the form and substance of a maintenance easement, right?
It's access, access to the pond.
Yep. And.
Just in granted.
And a soil management plan.
Containment particularly for the soils.
And what, should the property then be developed? If they continue to farm it, what happens then?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
So what's that soil management plan supposed to say now at the SEACRA determination? That if they develop this, this is the way they have to manage the soil?
We don't know yet. We just want to work on the language because the, the old soil is, should be preserved, contained, and that is the understanding that that's what they will be doing. And there will be, there will be things in place, but we'd like to know more about that now.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think, you know, as far as the soil is concerned, I did have a conversation with counsel about that and her, and she indicated that that type of thing, there will be testing, SWIP testing, there'll be, the DEC will, could get involved in some of the building lots and that basically it will be the lot owners' responsibility to make sure that that's when they develop their project to remediate if necessary. So. Am I wrong? Is that what we have discussed?
Yeah, yeah, that, we had, we had talked about how you apply for and obtain a SWIP in connection with your proposed development, that it's very specific to the development that you are proposing, actual building. And that in addition to that, if the board wanted to, you know, just be sure that in case, you know, somehow, you know, someone was developing less than an acre, I don't see how they could, but that you could have a covenant condition.
Excuse me, are you listening to the answer or should we just have counsel wait? Alan, would you like her to repeat it?
Yeah, please.
I was, I was saying that, you know, most times that a planning board does a, a conditional preliminary approval of a subdivision, they require certain covenants and restrictions to be filed. So for instance, you would want to have a, one of the covenant provisions likely say that any lot owner is buying next to a farm and, you know, wouldn't want to be, you wouldn't want them complaining about farm noise or dust or equipment. You would perhaps want to require that when during construction, they install silt fencing to contain any soils and contain runoff, you may want them to file a covenant that says that soils have to be contained on-site during construction and generally that soils must be contained on-site. And, and that is, you know, an added protection that the board could have. But, you know, you do know that a SWIP is required for all of these lots once they are developed.
But Alice, all that is done typically at the final or preliminary.
Preliminary approval, yeah. Not, 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 not during, no, no, but yeah, during preliminary.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, discussion points? Would you like to, you did make a motion, I think, right? Would you like to?
Yes. I'll withdraw that for the mo, for the moment.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any comments?
I, I want to thank H2M. I thought their memo was, was very well-written, very, very well-done and very extensive. I think there's been lots of discussion on this application so far and I, I really appreciate all the public comment we've had, both for and against. I found all that extremely helpful to my understatement. Even though it made it a marathon meeting, I still enjoyed hearing and learned a lot from all the comments. So again, thank you for everyone that showed up and made comments. I think this issue has been extensively discussed, extensively analyzed and carefully considered by the board and its advisors. So I think what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to declare this a, sorry, before I do that, I also agree with, you know, the other board members here that there are, I think, five or six outstanding issues that we have to put a pin before this project is approved. Now, my personal view is that these are properly handled and this is based on the advice of, of counsel and H2M, that, that these are appropriately addressed at the preliminary site plan phase of, of this process, not at the SEACRA review. And, and I agree that that's the form and substance of the maintenance access easement. We've got an easement conflict that we have to settle, right, which the applicant has said, yeah, they, they will deal with that, but we want to see that dealt with. We've got to put a pin in the, in the language of the agricultural reserve. You know, we've got this cottage issue in the corner we've got to deal with. We've got to get a complete site plan that shows all the drainage and, and deal with the, the view set issue. All of these things, in my view, are appropriately handled at kind of the next step at this process, which is preliminary site plan. And I, I try and stay focused and break this down into its components so that we can show progress. And I'm personally satisfied that we've given more than adequate consideration to the impact of human health on, on this application. So I'm prepared to, to motion that we declare this an unlisted action with a negative declaration. All right? And I'd like to make that motion, right?
Before doing so, I just want to make sure that H2M Lisa Rickmer actually agreed with your characteris, characterization of her recommendation.
I, the, as far as the legal order as to when the conditions are addressed, I think they, you, I think it's appropriate to roll these as conditions of the neg deck if you want to do, adopt a condition neg deck. I also understand the position of Alice that these can be appropriately addressed as conditions of subdivision. So the, yeah, the, I don't, and I don't think it, I think that the ultimate consequence is similar in that the, as, if it's a condition of the neg deck, it's still going to be part of the approval of the preliminary subdivision. So you're, you're still, yeah. If that helps.
You know, Lisa, look, I appreciate your, your advice, right? And I think we've always gotten great advice from you, but what I heard you tell me when, you know, we've been discussing this is you can do it now or you can do it later, right? So that was your opinion, I get that. Either way, you get to the same point. Alice's view was it's historically more appropriately done later, right? And I'm not picking sides here, but, you know, I tend to, on this one, you know, I, I feel closer to following the advice of Alice on this one. So, and, you know, we, there, there are a couple ways we could have skinned this cat, right? My view is, and I'm making a motion, that we skin it the latter way, which is to deal with those at the next step in the process. So that's, that's the motion that I'm making. Is there a second for that motion? All second, second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
With one abstention?
An abstention.
Okay.
Because I am concerned about those issues.
Yeah. Well, I think.
And the neg deck will go through anyway.
So Hannah, I, I agree with you. We're all concerned, we all want to see those settled, right? So, motion passes, right? Now.
The preliminary.
Just one second.
Will be continued at a different date, I hope?
Correct. Yeah. I did promise at the beginning of this opening, the end of the hearing or continuing the hearing on this, that we would take public comment on this. We will take any public comment at this point on this application, strictly limited to three minutes. I don't have a, yeah, three minutes, please. Any public comment on this?
Do you need the understanding that the preliminary hearing will be continued? I have no public comment. I think you should further advise.
Yep.
Any motions have to continue public hearing on preliminary?
Any other, any other public comment on this one? Right. Thank you. Thank you, board members. I can move on to Seventy-One Hill Street. Right, Alice, yep.
Yeah, so you just want to adjourn the public hearing until the next meeting?
Yeah, sorry. Motion to adjourn, sorry, motion to adjourn the public hearing on, on five sixty with the, to the next, our next meeting.
October twenty.
On October twenty.
October twenty.
My second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seventy-One Hill Street.
I'm going to come up, be a person.
That's good.
I think they're all connected, John, you can sit.
Lisa went over with John and as far as Holden, Bailey was there. I wasn't, so I'm going to ask Bailey to work the controls because.
Should I go towards me?
Towards you, yes.
Okay.
And I do want to thank Lisa and her engineer for meeting, at least I'm thinking in the future, that's a great, great, very great idea, get a lot of that stuff out of the way as opposed to taking her.
Signal in the back. Oh, sorry. You gotta talk into the microphone, John. Sorry.
Okay.
Do you want to thank Lisa again on the record recorded?
Yeah.
While everyone can hear.
Thank you, Lisa.
Microphone.
I always give thanks when thanks is due.
You just have to do it in the microphone or it doesn't count. The gentleman in the rear asks, do you use the microphone, please? Bailey, please.
Sure. Good evening, Bailey Larkin with Bennett Reed, offices at two twelve Windmill Lane in Southampton. As was mentioned, we got a memo from H2M and actually on Friday, we had a productive conversation going over kind of the nuts and bolts of the site plan memo. There were three issues that were raised in the memo for discussion with the board and I did a little cut and paste this afternoon for you guys. I have copies too, I can hand up. With a slight revision to the plan after our discussion. So the plan that was before the board at the last meeting and that H2M reviewed, we placed our cross-access between the two properties where the existing curb cut. placed our cross-access between the two properties where the existing curb cut is, um, on the movie theater property. So this is the approved site plan for the movie theater and then I have with it the amended, slightly amended plan, um, that's before the board this evening.
Thank you.
Um, we also placed, and this is a slight adjustment from what was before you, uh, previously, the pedestrian cross-access to connect exactly with where it's shown on the movie theater property where there are existing stairs. Um, the third concern that was raised in H2M's memo was whether or not the dumpster could actually be, uh, picked up by a truck. So we did take a look at those three concerns that the board raised. Um, again, we adjusted the pedestrian access and we had squires and Holden put on our plan a truck, um, backing in to demonstrate that they actually can, with the turn radius where it's proposed, access that dumpster with a little bit of an adjustment to the plan. Um, we had received a variance to allow for two compact parking spaces. Uh, the two compact parking spaces were actually removed when we adjusted for the STP. Um, but now if I, if we put two compact spaces directly adjacent to the dumpster, it provides for just a little bit more access so we don't have to worry about, um, the truck actually hitting any cars adjacent to the dumpster. Uh, we do still have one more parking space than is required by the Board of Trustees resolution and we do have that variance that allows for those two spaces which are, um, seven feet in width instead of nine feet in width. Um, the cross-access where it currently exists is about sixteen feet on the movie theater property and about eighteen feet on our property. Um, if the board were to require a wider access point, we do have one additional parking space. We could eliminate one of our spaces and provide for about twenty-five feet of width between the two properties. Um, and that would be eliminating parking space twenty-three on the plan that I handed up, I believe, 'cause there's a dumpster location on the adjacent movie theater property that was approved on the opposite side.
If we could provide it on, on our side, the movie theater has, what, sixteen feet?
Yeah.
Although there is, I believe, uh, an agreement that was part of the site plan approval for the movie theater, it's a future, it's a future coordinated access agreement as well. So you probably have some power there to make them to make, make that wider.
To match.
Yeah, to match, yeah.
Match our site.
But we can, we can make it wider. I had a conversation, actually, Bailey and I had a conversation with Eileen Powers today who's keeping her involvement because she was counsel for the, you know, for the trustees when they approved the plan. Um, so we can work that out. Um, we, we may need some help from the board and the village in talking to the movie theater folks.
The, the twenty-four foot cross-access width, was that, is that a code or is that what was negotiated with the trustees?
No, it was, it was, it was, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was silent. Alex, do you remember? I don't, I think it was just provide the access, I don't know.
Yeah, I believe what the trustee said was, was two-way and what our code requires for two ways, twenty-four, but the resolution doesn't mention that.
That's why twenty-four's not there.
Okay, okay. I don't remember it in the resolution, it was in the code, it's in the code, but we can, fortunately, we have, we have the ability to-
Twenty-four is the magic number. That's the number I remember.
Right.
And that's the correct number.
But with, with the rejigger of the parking, uh, we can do it.
Yeah.
So with elimination of this space here, we would then have twenty-five feet actually between parking spaces. The pedestrian access point was extended, so it extends to the staircase that was approved on the movie theater property. It was previously existing and it remains on their approved site plan.
So, uh-
And all the other comments were essentially, you'll correct me if, if you disagree, Lisa, were map changes and map comments, if I remember. Yes, no, Bailey?
And which, which Bob Smith is making?
Yeah, so there were, um, and there is the memo that you have in the file as well from, with the engineers' comments and most of them were very specific comments related to notations on the site plan related to handicap access, uh, some spot elevations required, you know, very technical elements of engineering. The, the main, I think, issue that the board is going to be concerned with will be the dumpster access, the cross-access easements, and then, um, the issue of any pedestrian safety concerns that you would previously raise. Um, yeah, and I think those are kind of the, the highlights of, of what, um, you were still looking at.
Yeah, so, just so it's clear in my mind, so the cross-access, we have twenty-four feet, you found that, that's good.
We're gonna get it.
Or you can get it, right? By, um, putting compact spaces that are, you said seven feet, not nine?
Correct. And we have a zoning board of appeals variance that allows for two compact spaces.
It, it works without them. It works without them, as you can see by the radius.
But the trash truck doesn't take their front bumper off accidentally, yeah. So if, by putting the two compact, I'm just kidding, sorry. Um, the, uh, the, the two compact spaces beside the dumpster area there kind of facilitate an easier, um, maneuver for, uh, the dumpster removal or emptying, right? And then the third one, that's, this is one I'm on, the pedestrian access used to be between the dumpster and the, uh, housing, right? And now it's been moved?
We had, we did, we moved it to extend to the staircase that was already approved and is on the approved site plan for the, um, movie theater, which is actually, it's, I believe it should still be there. It was there.
Yep, it's, it's there in, on the site.
It's there.
So that's pretty much as staying as, is?
Yeah, so what they're do- they're moving their sidewalk to align with the stairs, so it'll, the sidewalk will be containedness.
How did, uh, there's a big grade difference there, though, so does that have to be, uh, handicap?
Well, that's why they're stairs.
That's the stair. That's the stair.
Yeah, but so that's, it's stairs or work, you don't need a ramp.
I think the, if you needed the ramp, um, you'd have to just navigate the site in an alternative way.
Gotcha. Okay, so you're, you're good with stairs?
Yeah, and the stairs exist.
Yeah, and the stairs exist even better. Okay.
The one thing that was the memo asked for, I just, it was topo on the adjacent property. Alex, you were gonna look and see if there was any historical topo on the adjacent property? Mike, I would be surprised if you found it.
I didn't.
Um, I can't, I can't survey-
I don't think there wa- I don't think there was because that was, uh, that was just a renovation of the-
Right.
-existing theater and a re-lining of the parking lot. So they wouldn't have been required to do any-
But I can't get on their front, I can't survey somebody else's-
You could ask them.
Excuse me?
You could ask.
Well, you, it'd be helpful since you have a coordinate-
You guys were supposed to be in this together on this cross-access thing.
Future coordinated access agreement, it would be helpful if, if you did that because after all, they have to, they have to, they have to cooperate.
Can I do that?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think, look, from the, when we considered the theater, before you answer, Alice. When we were talking to the theater people, right, in approving that site plan and, and Seventy-One Hill, we made it very clear to both parties, um, that this cross-access was critical and everyone had to cooperate and, and provide this. That, with that notice as part of their, and I don't know if we wrote that into the decision. We did, even better.
You have a future coordinated access agreement, I think, as a condition to your-
Yes. So with all that, does that, um, make you comfort that we can, that we can enlist the support of the-
Does it allow trespass? We can call them and ask them.
Trust theater folks to cooperate on this?
We can call them and ask them and if not-
You can ask for permission for anything.
Yeah.
They've been very accommodating.
And if not, I'm gonna tell them we're gonna get a call from Mark London.
That's not gonna help, right? The trustees, we can confirm what the trustees did. Yeah, exactly. You wanna say that on the microphone?
We confirm what the trustees did. This board did not approve cross-access or anything. We, we looked to the trustees who controlled the matter with the parties.
Yeah.
And whatever they wanna do with, and they're in charge, as far as I'm concerned, as long as I'm on this board, the trustees are in charge of access and the parties and what they do with the parties, pedestrians or vehicles or surfboards, you're in charge.
But you're gonna have to look, you're asking me, you wanna see what it looks like, though. You guys wanna see what it looks like. And I think unfortunately for you, the trustees-
Some guys don't.
-left that up to you, didn't they?
No.
They did.
Yeah?
They did.
Not barely, but they did.
They sure did.
Misuse of trustee cover.
Yeah. Um, you and I might agree on that, but I don't, I don't think I'm getting anywhere with that.
Well, you know, site plan is, is how it looks, how it functions, right?
Hey, Alice in Wonderland did a lot of stuff, too.
Okay, um, of course we'll help. I, you know, I'm happy, if Alice says I can, I'll do whatever I can do to help, okay? Not that I'll help, but I'll try, okay? Um, there were some other sort of engineering technical things, um, if anyone wants to hear us about those or we can, uh-
I think Bob's working on that.
Leave that, yeah, so that's been-
Yeah, I think our, our, our team is actually working to address all of the kind of technical aspects, it was just that the three, uh, you know, we wanted to get the board's feel for the, the location of the cross-access, um, the dumpster location and that pedestrian access before he finalizes, um, all of the details that were nailed down at the last meeting. Cause it does affect, obviously, the number of parking spaces. Um, we can, of course, meet it with, with the elimination of this one space, but we will put the two compact spaces adjacent to the dumpster.
Good.
Bailey, could you show the board where there was, there's a crosswalk there, I think that was added since the last time for, for safety?
Oh, at the front entrance?
Yep, right there.
Right here. Yeah.
So that cross-
This is the front entrance to the hotel, it's over here. It's offset from where the cross-access is between the two properties.
Additional crosswalk.
Over on-
Here.
On Veridian.
Yeah.
My maps cut off.
These copies are very faint, it's kind of difficult to see what we're talking about.
It's actually fresh off the press, cause he just drew it this afternoon after our conference call, so we will get you full-size copies that are, you know, more detailed, but we did wanna get an idea just for those three points that were raised.
So the purpose of the crosswalk there is to get across the parking lot, is that?
From the-
To the walk, yeah.
Yeah. It's the main entrance to the hotel.
Coming from where?
The main entrance.
From the handicap spaces.
Got it, okay, I see now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, Alex, what do we need to do next? We need-
Well, we know they're gonna provide a revised, um, copy, but you can use this opportunity to discuss those issues or if there's anything else that you feel is important to incorporate on the site plan in terms of the issues that have been raised.
Anyone? No? How about down here?
No, no.
Cause I think we're making good progress on this.
Yeah.
This is good, thank you. Right? And I'm, you know, I'm glad you got, guys got together and it was a good meeting, so it sounds like a lot of progress.
And, and when you update the plan, we have a slightly more updated version of the movie theater than that one there. If you don't have it, we can get you a copy of it.
Can you get it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, that'd be great. Is it, do you have it digitally?
Yeah, it's on the Dropbox.
Fantastic.
Um, yeah, there was some later revisions where they added more landscaping than what showed.
Oh, wonderful. Nothing that would, in your mind's eye, that would mess up the cross-
Not that I can see immediately.
Okay. Well, that's all helpful. Alright, well, we'll be back, I guess, next, the next meeting?
Twentieth, right, the twentieth?
That's right.
Yeah, the twentieth. Okay, thank you.
So, I'm just gonna say that if, just in terms of the timeline for getting in material and then having engineering, revise engineering comments, just keep that in mind, depending on when it comes in, whether or not we'll have revised comments by that time.
Yeah.
It'll just depend on everyone's timing.
Yeah, right. So, if it, if there's, if it's submitted to the file in time, then, you know-
Get them in as quickly as we can?
If we can. We'll do our best.
I'm gonna just, I'm gonna tell Bob Smith that the chairman was demanding it. You gotta help me out with some of this stuff, Mark. Just use your power.
Okay, uh, no subdivision, thank you very much. No subdivision reviews tonight.
Oh, did you just wanna adjourn that, that public hearing?
Oh, yeah, motion to adjourn Seventy-One Hill Street to October twentieth meeting. Second, anyone?
Second.
Oh, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you, do you find any, I should've jumped in there before, do you have a, does there need to keep that public, uh, public hearing open? We're gonna have to work all this stuff out.
Yeah, let's keep it open, okay? Cause we already motioned and passed it, so I don't like to do one motions. Eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings?
Yeah, we received no new submissions on this application.
So, I need a motion to move that to October twentieth, right? Or we just leave that as is? Alex?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, if you'd like, you can, you can do that.
Motion to, uh-
Still hanging on.
Yeah, that's hanging on for whatever. Uh, motion to move eight sixty-five to our next meeting, second?
Second.
I think, all in favor?
Aye.
Eight sixty-five.
Seventy-four White Street?
Still hanging on.
Still hanging on?
Yeah, I haven't heard any new update on that application.
Okay, motion to move seventy-four White Street to our next meeting, second?
A second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That would, that would be nice to get finished someday.
Yes, someday. Um, John, are, is this, uh, pre-submission submit, is that you too?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do, um, WMS Realty.
This is that little strip mall up, as, at the end of, at the easterly end of the village. Most of you might know it as the building where Mark, Dr. Carton's office is, right?
Exactly.
Uh, so, the application is to put in two wet uses. Um, one would be like the coffee shop and the other one would be a medical arts facility, uh, medical arts facilities, which have, uh, medical arts facilities have a higher wastewater generation than a typical office. So we did go, or I didn't go, but the property owner had someone go to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services Board of Review and they allowed the, those two wet uses, um, contingent upon transferring development rights. I read the transfer of development rights, um, condition in the Board of Review's decision and all it says is, I, I think it's, we can take care of that with a, a pine baron credit from the town of Southampton. There is an asterisk, which, by the way, this is a commercial use and I think it, to the extent that people are concerned about the specter of transferring development rights for residential uses, that's one thing, this are, these are commercial uses, but I, um, there's a little asterisk on the Board of Review, um, approval, which Alex and I went over, um, that says in certain instances, um, you, you might be required, the pine baron credit would have to come from the same school district, but I read the comprehensive, um, pine barons program. I've also been involved in two or three, three or four RAD, what they call RAD subdivisions in the western part of town and I could be correct, could be corrected. In those RAD subdivisions where you're transferring from, uh, the core of pine barons into other non-core areas, there's a specific requirement, uh, that you stay within the school district. Um, but I'm not aware of any such requirement, uh, in this instance, which involves a, uh, a, um, commercial use approved by the Board of Review subject to a transfer in from the town. It doesn't, it could be from anywhere in the town. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that because that gave a little bit of pause to people. I've spoken with the village attorney about it and I think Eileen and Alex should weigh in on that. My position is that it's solely a pine baron credit necessary from the town of Southampton, that's because of the language in the Board of Review, uh, s- not the zoning board of appeals, but the Suffolk County Department of Health Services Board of Review, which sits like a, a zoning board.
Why do you, why do you need these, this?
Why do we need it? Um, um, wet uses-
For wet.
For wet uses, for here, wet u- wet use like the coffee shop or, uh, medical arts.
Sorry, the wet uses the trigger.
Ha, they trigger a higher gallonage of wastewater flow.
That boosts to the pine barons?
Excuse me?
That's what I get it.
No, it's not a pine barons thing. It's, it's the, it's, uh, the Board of Review.
That's right.
And, and they require the transfer in and development rights, and the most available ones are the pine baron credits.
Okay. Which is the same thing that was going on with, uh, that Coral Brothers, that house behind the Paul Brothers, you know, to do the same thing there. That's residential or this is commercial?
That's residential, yeah, yeah. I don't know.
That's the same. I wanted the trail.
I, I will, I will tell you that, I don't know if you folks know, my, my office, behind my office, there are two white buildings, and I have had for, what, ten years, an approval from the Board of Review and from the zoning board appeals and the planning board to take down those two white buildings and put two twenty-five hundred square foot homes there. Probably my grandchildren will end up doing it, but it's, I transferred in two, one and a half pine baron credits, which I purchased, and they were from West Hampton. There was no requirement, uh, that they be from the school district. Uh, that was resident, now that's residential. You don't, I don't think you have the same, if I may, political concern about it when you have a commercial use.
I was hearing something about the transfer within a town, or from a town to a separate municipality or village, needed approval of the receiving villager municipality. Can you talk about that for a second?
In the pine baron scheme, I've had to deal with that in these RAD subdivisions, the presidential subdivisions. So if you wanna transfer, say, pine baron credits from Brookhaven into a subdivision in the western part of the town of Southampton.
The town.
Because it's a residential element and things like school districts and stuff like that, you have to get the town of Southampton to say, okay. That's built right into the, uh, that multi-town overall pine baron credits.
It's clear there, but it's less.
Absolutely clear there.
It's less clear if it's going from the town, it's a town TDR, it's now being used by the village. It's unclear, right?
No, my position is that it's, my position is, it is crystal clear.
I know it's your position.
No, 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 no. I, I, I think, you should have Alex and Eileen talk about that. I think they're gonna agree with me. But we'll see what happens. I don't wanna put 'em on the spot.
But I think that's percolating.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, I've spoken to the village attorney about this, and we've reviewed the language. And you're right, that it does say for an intermunicipal transfer, the receiving municipality has to authorize it, and the mayor has authorized us to try and set up a procedure to figure out how we can address these going forward. So we're gonna work on advancing that.
Before, before you answer, John, but isn't it ultimately up to the health department to say thumbs up or thumbs down on the transfer?
Yes.
So they're actually, I mean, you can have your opinion, Eileen can have her opinion, but the ultimate arbiter is the health department.
Right. And, and what we've seen from the health department approvals is there's an asterisk in fine print that says you need the approval of the receiving municipality. So we're, we're trying to work towards a way to get that approval.
And we feel that the village wouldn't be a municipality.
Right, because the village would, in this case, would be a receiving municipality, and we, our code is just silent on it right now.
Yeah, so I, I, I mean, personally, I see that as sort of a technical aspect of this, that it's just gotta work its way out, but the, you know, which is kind of a side show to this.
We'll figure that out.
Yeah, but to what you're asking for, subject to that issue being settled.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, okay, I get.
Yes, so there's no, there's not, there's, there's not one additional, uh, square footage of, square foot of, of building there.
Yeah.
Um, no change in parking, no change in anything. It's all interior renovations, but as you know, under the village code, a, other than a permit for single-family residence, every building from an application has to come before you.
Yep.
So that's really what we're here for. It's, um.
It's one of the four things we have left.
Mm-hmm.
One of the four areas we have left.
Okay.
He's still sorry.
I'm curious from the picture, what, what part of that subdivision is disappearing? Is it the dog and, is it the pet, I mean, is it the pet store that's going? Or you were showing a picture of a pet store and, and the little money mart, and I didn't understand where your project is.
There are two units within the building.
Behind those storefronts, or, okay.
The storefronts.
Okay.
But they're shown on SP dash one. It says proposed medical office and then a proposed coffee shop. Says donut shop.
Just the photo you were showing, I was getting, I was just confused. I just, the photo that you, I was looking at, I didn't know where it was located, because that was up there. It was a little confusing.
Tenants come and go, and they move around, or remember the pet food stories to be on one side.
Nice to be next to Kot.
I, I'm sorry, Hannah.
I said the pet store used to be next to Dr. Kot.
Yeah, it used to be next to Dr. Kot, and now it's migrated.
The other side.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know that, there's really, you know, and Alex will tell you and Lisa will tell you, and I don't know that there's really m- much to talk about other than this interior renovations. It's no different than somebody coming into a Job's Lane retail spot with a new tenant. The only twist here is that we've got the, this health department issue to work out, and Alex and I and Eileen and I will work on that.
So is the buildout of the space expected to be?
Existing, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, but, but it's separating existing space, it's just making it smaller. Right, so you could lease it to somebody, rent it to somebody else, right?
No, it's not making it smaller, no.
One of them appears to be making one bigger, the medical office.
Yes.
Looks like it's two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so where I'm headed with this is, um, the intended future use, it would be reasonable, not even reasonable, you, potentially, um.
Likely.
Likely, or something to consider that the traffic flow in and out of that parking lot might increase as a result of this.
Uh, I don't, I don't know about that. Um, the park, the parking calculus is changing.
And I've heard, you know, a lot of people complain about the traffic pattern coming in and out of it. Has there been any discussion, uh, or any consideration to, thought, uh, or thought on maybe how, how to improve, um, that, the traffic flow in and out of there?
I, I've used that, um, various, you know, merchants there for a long time, and, I mean, I, I don't know who would have those concerns. I don't have this, but look what, look what, what has happened here. In the old days, before this was, when this was, I forget what was there, this was like, as so many of those developments, it was just one big wide-open curb cut. But now you have a very discreet, you know, curb cut, um, on Hampton Road, and then on, on thirty-nine.
So on thirty-nine, is there any signage there that it's in only, no out?
If, if, if you wanna, if you want us to put it there, we will.
Alex, do you have a?
I know how else we're gonna do it. It gets circulation and.
Yeah, that, to me, in my mind, that's the kinda tricky part there, is if you're trying to come in off thirty-nine where traffic's moving pretty fast.
Yeah, you can't cross.
And somebody's trying to come out and make a, and make a right or left turn out of that end of the parking lot, that, that's.
I've never seen anybody do anything other than come a right, yeah.
Same person would try and make a left turn.
Yeah, I don't think a same person would. You'd have to go, you'd have to go out the Hampton Road exit and come out.
Yeah. I, I just wouldn't put that on your radar screen.
Sure, I mean, signage is fine.
There are so many medical offices there currently.
Yeah.
You've got, on one corner, you have Cornell While, then where the old Buzz Chu used to be, there will now be more Stony Brook, then there's the Phillips Cancer Center, down a little further up thirty-nine, there's Olin, and, and people are going in and out of Buzz Chu, I mean, it's crazy.
So, look.
Well, I would just caution you that I, I, these are allowable uses in an existing site.
I, I understand, John, you know, we're also here to kinda do the right thing for the public and the village. So I, I, it's not a requirement yet, it's just the placeholder that we wanna think about it and discuss it, because, you know, you're looking for feedback, that's free.
Okay, so signage to assure, or to make less likely that someone's gonna try to come out on County Road thirty-nine.
No, I mean, I think I've seen people come out onto thirty-nine. When there's no tra- you know, there's no traffic in the afternoon. It's in the morning.
I'm sorry, Hannah?
I said there's no traffic in the afternoon, and I've seen people go in and out of there.
Of the County Road thirty-nine?
Right.
This, this reminds me of one time that I was at the Starbucks in Manorville, and I wanted to cross over, and I, there was a Suffolk County cop sitting there.
Going south on one eleven?
Yeah, and I said, can I go over? Can I do this? And he said, you can do it, it's your funeral, but there's no, there's no prohibition.
That's good advice, that's good advice. Um, look, you, you ask a question, I, I'm not a traffic expert, right, but I, I think it's fair as part of the discussion as this moves on, that, you know, people that know, that do this professionally, uh, traffic analysis, you know, weigh in, and Lisa, this is kind of your.
Yeah, I, um.
That we can, are able to discuss this intelligently with analysis and, and feel good that, you know, we're, um, doing the right thing.
I, I'd have to think about that. I, I understand what you're asking. I'd have to think about that. It's, I don't think I've ever been asked, or I would scratch my head in terms of the propriety of asking for some sort of traffic analysis to put fully permitted uses in a fully built-out, um, facility where there's not any increase in the square footage of the, but I'll think about it. I, let, let me, let me think about it.
Think about it, because, you know, I agree with Hannah. It's getting very busy on that, uh, corner. I mean, that already is a busy corner.
Mm-hmm.
There's also a coffee store right there, so we do wanna make sure you're safe when you pull out of your, get your coffee there. But that's a very busy, uh, area right there, because there are a number of medical offices, there are about to be a lot more medical office, offices when that, that, whatever that is there on the southwest corner.
The old Buzz Chu.
The old Buzz Chu, when that opens up. So it's one of those things that you should think about and, um, consider, because it's gonna come up again, okay?
All right. And Alex, you'll talk to, I had a fairly long conversation with, um, Eileen Zavehill, you'll be with her?
Yeah, we'll follow up with her, absolutely.
On the wastewater issue. All right, thanks.
Definitely.
With, um, with pre-submission, we don't have to make any motions, sir.
Nope, this is just an informal conversation.
And then, so should I file the, I'm gonna file the app, site plan application now? Do you, do you need something for that? Does your code require us to, you say that I can file the site plan application?
Nope, I think, as long as you feel you can address those comments, I would file them.
I think that disappeared.
Okay.
So, so, I, we're done on this one, all right?
Yeah.
I have a question for you. Are you planning to bring Fowler back on the twentieth?
Well, it's for continued, um.
So the issue on the twentieth, I now understand, is we may only have three members here, and I prefer that, you know, any Fowler discussion, that we're all, that everybody's here.
So who'll be here?
The following week, I'm gone. We've already, those, we have Bill, we have Bill that week, and then I'm the next, and we already, we already alerted you to that calendar.
So, uh, the first meeting in November, you're not here?
Yes, and he's not here the last, in October.
I'm here in November, but not, not, not yet of October.
So it's all, it's.
So, so I wanna coordinate that, because you can participate by Zoom.
Yeah.
Right? You can listen, but you can't vote.
You, you, you don't count towards the quorum.
That's it. You can't count on the quorum, but you can vote.
So factor that into whatever you're asking.
Well, Amanda, since you voted no, I don't really care.
Fine, and you know what? I'm gonna be in India, so it's not gonna be easy for me to put by Zoom.
I'll think about it. I think I probably wanna go forward.
Factor internally, John, don't factor out loud.
What's that? No, I'm.
I wanted to put that on the radar screen.
One in three years.
Radar screen as well.
Anyway, so October twentieth, you'll go, Amanda, you will not be here?
I won't be here.
Bill will be here.
Yeah, and.
So you want him, but not me, is what you said on the record.
Okay, so.
Well, for, for the record, unless, on that one, because, you know, this is.
Why don't we wait till both of us are back?
I'm gonna talk to Alex.
This is sensitive enough that we're not, you know, I'm not gonna push that forward unless we're all here and can all vote.
Okay, let's talk about that then, because, um, are, are you telling me that you're not gonna hear it until December?
Of course not.
Okay, so what are we saying? Some people will participate with?
I, I'm saying that.
That wasn't a challenge.
There's a tentative risk.
Well, I, uh, let me answer your question with a question. Why don't you get back to us on what you're, you're planning to bring up at the next meeting, and we can figure out how to manage it, because.
I mean, I've, I've got a, I've got a complete, I have a complete preliminary application.
Well, the, the board has some concerns that the board should bring to the applicant.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I mean, I think those things that we mentioned, those conditions that we all have concerns with, are, you know, probably, are you gonna have those ready by, by either, by the first
Well, I think there should be, I think there should be some discussion amongst the
meeting in November?
board members about what they'd like to see, and they should give the applicant some, some guidance, and I think there should be some actual discussion about, you know, what's gonna go on the agricultural easement, what the language would be in the access easement.
Can we do that now?
No, 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 we cannot do that now.
Okay, I, I, for my own purposes, this is, don't say anything. You've got, I, I gave you the easement, you asked if you could, if we could widen it at the end. I reminded you that'll be in a buffer. Yeah, we'll widen it at the end. Who's it gonna go to? It's gonna go to the village of Southampton, it's gonna go to the trustees.
I'm, I'm starting to get uncomfortable with how much we are discussing this application with, you know, having adjourned the public hearing for the evening.
The only point, the only point I wanted to put on your radar screen is, uh, we're gonna be missing one member.
Okay.
On, on the twentieth, and another important member on the first meeting of November.
What's the meeting after the November meeting? First meeting?
November seventeenth?
Halloween.
That's like a month, well, a little more, that was like six, seven weeks from now.
Yeah, I mean, the third and the seventeenth. The, the meetings in November are three and seventeen.
November three and November seventeenth. Amanda, you will not be here for the third, but you could participate with Zoom?
No.
Uh, what, what dates are you away?
I'm gone, the, end of, uh, very, in October through, uh, November sixteenth.
So what?
Okay.
India is a, not a third world country. Um, so let me see, November third and November nineteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
You're, you're just out on the twentieth?
Yeah. Of October.
Okay.
Uh, are you leaving?
I will be. I'm here the twentieth. I'm in, I am here.
So there's four of us here on the twentieth.
I'm open-minded, you know, we don't have to have this, Alex, tell me, I mean, we could have a meeting on a different day, right, when everyone is available sometime in October, not on the twentieth.
Everybody.
As long as we notice it properly.
Yeah.
Everybody, but Bill will be here on the twentieth.
Yeah.
We're gonna discuss these things, right? You know, it, no one's gonna be voting on preliminary approval on the twentieth, so let's, let's.
No, that's the truth.
Let's keep it moving, that's my gut.
I just wanted to let you know, remind you of, you know, what everyone's schedule is, so, and our flexibility, okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments, questions from anyone on the board?
Just a reminder, we have on the agenda approval of the September fifteenth minutes, if you've had an opportunity to review them.
I think we need a delay in that, because there are some corrections that didn't get included.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got two copies I haven't had a chance to read. Yeah, let's punt that